Thank you, Jason. Good evening. I call this meeting to order. Today, we have two items on the agenda, and we're going to start with the Renton Regional Fire Authority Budget Review. I want to welcome Chief Rick Marshall and Samantha.
Thank you, Council President Perez. It is certainly an honor to speak to the council this evening. I was speaking with Council President Perez a while back. And as I think at this point, all of you know, I am retiring at the end of October after four very busy years of working to create the Renton Regional Fire Authority, which was approved by the voters and went into service July 1st of 2016. And since that time, it's really been this cooperative effort between the City of Renton and then the Fire Authority, us standing up and creating this separate government entity that I thought it was really important to get in front of the council as I'm kind of riding off into the sunset, to really help create a sense of comfort or confidence that the RFA is really in good hands. And a little bit, as I am heading to retirement, being able to let people see behind the curtain and know that I'm really not that good, that there are just there are many people in the RFA that are there that actually make all this magic happen. And so with that, I'd like for you all to meet, if you haven't already, Samantha Babich, who is the Chief Administrative Officer for the RFA. And she oversees a number of things in admin, not the least of which is finance. So she is going to give you just kind of a very quick overview of the financial position that we find the RFA in now. So Samantha, it's all yours.
Thank you, Chief. I just want to make sure, can you see the screen with the PowerPoint on it? Am I sharing the right screen? Thank you. Okay. So some of the things that Rick or Chief Marshall had asked me to go over with you all tonight was the goals and priorities from a finance standpoint of the RFA, our revenue and our expenditures for your super high level overlook and how those have changed over since 2018, where we are year-to-date with the 2020 budget. And as of August 31st, because that's our last period that we covered. Share with you some of the V O Bar. We've seen this, our 10-year forecast from July using the county's economic forecast from June, and then that same 10-year forecast in September using the county's August numbers. So some of the things we did in between that timeframe to try to flatten the curve, so to speak, which we kind of actually did flatten the curve a little bit. It's kind of funny. So some of those adjustments, and then some of the tools that we use for long-term capital fleet and facility planning and forecasting. So with those, the financial goals and priorities, they've always been the same since day one for us. Transparency, accountability, stability from a finance standpoint. We try to achieve fiscal transparency by using a zero-based budget. We budget every year. We start from scratch. Everybody starts from ground zero and has to justify all the expenditures that they're requesting in the budget. Pre-COVID, we had all the members of the organization invited to every budget meeting from the beginning so that everybody had input and eyes on the budget, which was really exciting for some people, pretty boring for others. From an accountability standpoint, we have written all of our policies and procedures, got them up to date for rules that apply to us. We adopted all the city's policies in the beginning, and then over the subsequent years, we updated those to be more RFA-centric. We tightened our internal controls. We've added staffing so we can segregate or separate duties from a finance standpoint. We've locked down access to our finance software. We've built some pretty cool workflows that document procurement requests from start to finish. And then we conduct periodic internal audits, mostly around payroll systems because that's where we had the most hiccups in the very beginning. We've got some pretty robust fiscal oversight. If you've ever been to any of our commission meetings or our governance board meetings, not one meeting goes by that somebody doesn't pick some odd obscure thing out of our vouchers and ask questions about it. And we're normally prepared to answer those. And then from the very beginning, 2016, 2017, 2018, we've had no findings in any of our audits from the state auditor's office. So we're fairly proud of that. From a financial stability standpoint, one of the things that the mayor had asked when he was on our governance board meeting was he wanted to see the future. He wanted to see what that forecast looked like. When do our expenses outpace our revenues? And so we finally accomplished that. We're going to share some of that with you tonight. Long-term capital fleet and facility planning, we've got a 21-year fleet replacement cycle and funding for that, 18-year capital facilities plan and funding for that. We negotiated four-year collective bargaining agreements this last round because we wanted to get past that fire benefit renewal vote. We wanted to know exactly where we were going to be for those four years leading up to the vote. So we're pretty proud to get those done. And then we built some strong operating reserves, which have kind of allowed us to weather this storm that we had this year with COVID and delay of property tax collections. So right now, we'll talk about exactly what we've got in the bank and how long we can sustain if something like that would happen again. So the high-high level, four-year budget. And anybody can stop me at any time. Just tell me you got a question. From the budgeted revenue types for 2018 through 2021, you can kind of see, I don't know if my pointer will work, but in 2019, the governance board authorized us to increase our benefit charts quite significantly. It was 20% jump in that year. And then it's tapered off. It's held level. That's the gray bar. It's tapered up to the held level for the next three years. Other revenue increases are the EMS levy. EMS levy has gone up about $1 million since we started the RFA. And a lot of that's due to the MIH program, the FD cares program. Fire District 40 contract has stayed pretty stable. It only went up like 2% last year. And rev it or expenses over the four years, the you can see again, the jump in personnel in 2019. That was staffing the fire station 15 that opened in 2019. And then in 2020, costs increased again. We were adding staff, mostly civilian staff, and our cares unit staffing. So civilian staffing, that increased. But you can see our cost for contracted services, which is the darkest blue line, actually decreased. So that was the year that we were transitioning off the city's ILAs for IT facilities and fleet. Any questions on the four-year overview? Chief Marshall, anything you want to add?
Nope, keep on rolling.
Great. Okay, 2020. Where were we as of August 30th? We had, we started 2020 with 20, just over $20 million in fund balance for our operating fund. We have collected to date 55.7% of our expected revenues, just over $23 million. Our expenses were at about 57% or 34.35 million. So we had expenses in excess of revenue of $582,000. So our net fund balance for operating was $19.5 million. So we're sitting, as of August 30th, 31st, at six and a half months' worth of operating funds in fund balance. Any questions on that? Okay, so here's Rick's favorite picture, the whale. So a lot of you have already seen this. We developed a 10-year forecast with where we were as of June 30th and what the economic, the King County came out with their economic forecast post-COVID. And so this is kind of a 10-year look where you can see mid-2022, we our expenses, which is the dotted red line, start outpacing our revenues. And that was based on, you know, decreased property values, decreased tax collections, decreased, 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 everything that was happening like at the end of June. And then it kind of curves down slowly over the next several years till we have a major problem mid-2027, where we actually start going negative. So that was as of July. So we huddled with our executive team. We kind of revamped our budget. We cut all nonessential non-personnel spending to the tune of about $800,000. We are projecting a cost savings in personnel costs of $600,000. And then we froze all transfers out to our capital accounts. And that was another $4.2 million. So we were holding on to as much as we could, not knowing what our collections were going to be. We're actively pursuing the AFG supplemental grant, King County grant, the public assistance grant, pretty much any grant due to COVID that we can figure out how to apply for is what we're pursuing at this point. So after all those changes and before the grants, this is kind of what happened to the whale. It's become known as. As we slowed down spending, we started holding on to reserves. We started using operating reserves to supplement our expenses. And this is kind of where we ended up, where we hold the line through 2025-ish. And then expenses start outpacing revenues again. So that was kind of pre, that was July, early July, and then early September. And so every other month, when the county comes out with their new economic forecast, we're adjusting our 10-year forecast to align with that.
And the one thing I would add here, two things. First off is that there is a, there's a very, well, in my mind, a very complicated Excel spreadsheet formula behind this picture that allows the RFA to enter in any number of different variables in real time to look at what the outcome is going to be downstream, which is what we did here by looking at the change in scenarios. And then the second thing is, is just to point out that I remember very vividly, I could probably even think of the exact meeting where now Mayor Pavone, who was on the governing board, said, "Show me the X. I want to see the X where we know that our expenses are going to outpace our revenues and tell me when that's going to be." And unfortunately, I did not get it done in his tenure on the governing board. But I take great pride in being able to show our board that and actually him as mayor that we are tracking this stuff. I think that we've made a few changes. But again, this is all predicated on our true desire to contain costs, not the least of which is to hold the line as much as possible on our benefit charge that we include in your fire department bill, if you will. So you know, we're doing okay. We do know that expenses are going up faster than we can generate revenue. That's typical within the city as well as the RFA. But it allows us to look ahead and then decide on what kind of things we could do to tweak that, to get as much out of it as we can before we have to increase revenue. Thanks.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, so moving on to long-term capital planning for fleet and facilities. We've got right now, as it stands, a 21-year fleet replacement cycle and an 18-year capital facility. So 21 years may seem odd, but there's a reason for that. And that is that the lifespan of our longest-lasting apparatus, which is our aerial or our ladder trucks, is 21 years. So that's why we use the 21 years. Their first-line apparatus for XM are eight years, and then they go into a reserved status to live out their 21 years. Capital facilities, I don't know why we have 18 years. I think it's based on the chemistry assessment that was done two years ago. That was a 20-year projection of costs to maintain facilities. And that's where we started with, but we'll build on that. So these two schedules are updated twice a year, once at budget time and again January and February before we do any spending. It uses the base cost plus inflators. So we know if a pumper is $817,000 this year, based on inflation, we could expect to pay $841,000 next year. So we're taking all that into consideration as we build out these scenarios. And then we can play with the what-if. What if we delay that pumper one more year? What does that look like? It's not always a cost savings to delay things by a year, but this kind of helps us play through all the what-ifs. The other goal was to fund fleet and facilities in a way that didn't cause extreme fluctuations in our operating budget because fleet facilities right now, pre-impact fee collection for RFA, it all comes from our operating account. So we didn't want to have a scenario where one year we had $3 million worth of fleet expenses that had to be pulled from the operating fund, and then the next year none. So we tried to kind of flatten that out. And I'll give you a couple of examples of that. So our long-term fleet plan, like I said, is 21 years. And it kind of just goes through what our fund balance is going to be at the beginning of the year, what we're going to contribute in from operating, what any interest might be, what sale of any proceeds from sale of any surplus might be, and then what we project on spending. So I know it's really small and I don't know if zooming in will help. Oops. Nope. But like unless, it might be really small for you. But in 2020, we started the year with $3.1 million in our fleet account. We transferred in $250,000. We project $30,000 from interest income. We plan on spending $386,000 and even a year with just over $3 million. And then we start 2021 with just over $3 million, and on and on and on it goes. So with a funding, level funding of $1 million a year, plus the interest and the revenue from surplus, we believe that we can maintain our fleet as-is, a fleet of 60 through 2038. So that's very comforting to find out, to find out that we can do that. Same thing with facilities. It's a little bit different because it covers everything from the pavement in the driveway up through the rooftop and anything EC units on top of all things in between. So electrical panels, elevators, carpeting, takes into consideration all the things that you have to do to maintain a capital facility and the expected lifespan. And then it started telling us how much we had to put away each year. So right now, we believe with a $1.5 million transfer in from operating each year, we can maintain our facilities and build a facility 2026. I believe, I can't remember what year. We were, this is where we were playing around with the scenarios of building a new fire station 16. So what it would take for us to get there. So these are kind of the tools where we can work with the committee, the budget and finance committee, the capital and operating committee, and kind of make those determinations on how much they want to set aside each year or what it's going to cost to move things around year after year. So with that, those are kind of the tools in our toolbox to keep RFA fiscally healthy. We've been able to weather this COVID storm without a whole lot of sleep loss other than perhaps Chief Marshall and me. So I'll answer any questions or expand on anything you want. Or I'll just go to dinner.
Yeah, I think it's, I think one of the things that's important, at least that I've looked at, it's important for the council to understand is that when we became an RFA, when we became a single-purpose district, is that every dollar that we brought in, we would purpose towards fire and life safety, which is great. The challenge that we face is that in tough times, we don't have other areas. And I know, let's see, Kelly's not on here. But we don't have, we don't have a community services or a parks department that we could say, "Well, we're not going to fund that quite as much because public safety is one of those critical pieces." And we believe that our community expects us to be able to continually provide the excellent service that they've come to expect. And so it really has led us to take a posture of being extremely fiscally conservative. And I think that that's why, you know, you can see the financial position of the RFA right now. You know, we all agree that we're not out of the woods yet with the economic impacts of COVID. But we're in a position where we can, we've got a little bit of breathing room. And we're not going to see any significant impacts in levels of service or budgetary impacts on the RFA until well into next year. And that, so that gives us some time to react to the economic changes brought on by COVID, the election, who knows what. So thank you very much for your time. Like I said, happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you, Chief Marshall. Thank you, Samantha. Council members, if you have any questions, please raise your hand. Well, it seems that you guys nailed it. So we very much appreciate it, this presentation and this effort. And thank you for coming. And I don't have any questions because obviously I'm part of the RFA board. So obviously, I can ask all my questions and more during this year. But again, I appreciate the effort and especially the very eye-opening situation of what is going to happen with the revenue. And we have to look forward to solutions because I always say, we cannot spend more money than what we have, right? That's the rule. So thank you very much for everything. And I'm going to move to the second item in our agenda today. And I think it's the King County Affordable Housing Sales Tax briefing. And I want to welcome Doug Levy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And let's see here. I'm going to... Just a second, pull up my screen here. Can everybody see that okay?
Yes.
Okay. So I've been asked to give you a presentation on House Bill 1590 involving a 1/10 of 1 cent sales tax for affordable housing and housing services. And I think at the end of this presentation, we'd like to get some directional signals from you all. And I know the mayor may wish to jump in and has prerogative to do so whenever he feels necessary. And then Kip Vincent is with us as well. And I want to thank members of his staff that worked on this presentation with me. So to give you a sense of House Bill 1590, this was a bill that was passed during the 2020 legislative session, ended about six months ago, though it seems like much longer ago. And the main thing that House Bill 1590 does is it amends a 2015 law that already allowed counties and potentially cities to impose a 1/10 of 1 cent new local sales tax for construction of affordable housing and housing-related services for those at or below 60% of area median income. And it already had a mechanism where counties had a certain amount of time to act. And if they did not, then cities could. What the 2020 legislature did is they revised the law so that instead of the 1/10 of 1 cent sales tax being subject to a voter approval requirement, it was changed to something that could councilmanically be done again by counties and potentially cities. And we'll get into those timelines. Oops. So under both the 2015 law and the new change in statute, here's what the revenues that are collected have to be used for. Affordable housing and housing units, facilities that provide housing-related services or behavioral health-related services, funding of O and M of newly constructed housing or facilities. That's that first 60%. And then the remainder has to go toward mental and behavioral health treatment programs and services, and again, housing-related services. Boy, I'm doing a terrible job of going in order here. Okay, and so how does this apply to King County and potentially to the City of Renton? Well, we know that King County has already proposed imposing the 1/10 of 1 cent sales tax. Last Tuesday, it was in the budget transmetal package from the county Executive Dow Constantine to the county council. And the county has already announced an interest in doing this and an interest in using the funds to provide permanent supportive housing for the chronically homeless population. And in conversations with us and in a two-page document that the county prepared, which we'll get to you if you haven't seen it yet, the county has emphasized that it wants to use this funding to purchase hotel and nursing home and group home-type facilities for permanent supportive housing, up to about 2,000 units of it. One side note I would give you all is that the statute right now doesn't explicitly allow for purchasing of units. So the county has said it would look to make a technical amendment to state law to do that. Here's a sense for you of the 1/10 of 1 cent and how much it raises, up to $80 million a year. And again, in the budget proposal, the Executive's Office indicated a desire to bond against that to create a stream of revenue of up to $400 million with bonding. So also, I would note for you that, as you well know, we've had a series of ongoing discussions with the county. And this 1/10 of 1 cent sales tax has come up in our discussions with the county about specific revenue sources that could be used to relocate the 235-plus residents of the Red Lion Inn de-intensification shelter. So there's some important stipulations around this 1/10 of 1 cent that we want to get into with you. First of all, in order to retain an exclusive right over the 1/10 of 1 cent and to do that countywide, counties under the statute the legislature just passed have to act by September 30th, 2020, which is this coming Wednesday. Another important piece of information, within the City of Renton, the 1/10 of 1 cent sales tax equates to about $2.8 million a year. That's a figure that our administrative services division folks generated for us as an estimate. And I mentioned the September 30th, 2020 deadline by which counties would need to act. Doesn't mean that if counties don't formally act by the 30th, they just forfeit their right to impose the tax. It does mean that their exclusive authority over the 1/10 of 1 cent is no longer there. And more to the point, if an individual city in a county elects, starting October 1st, to impose either the whole 1/10 of 1 cent or any portion thereof, it may do so. There's one other important provision in what the legislature passed in 2020 that we want to make you aware of. And that's that in King County only, the statute applied to counties with a population of 1.5 million or more, which just is the one county in our state. A county that meets that population threshold, if it wants to impose the 1/10 of 1 cent, it has to demonstrate that it will spend at least 30% of the monies collected within any city with a population greater than 60,000 on taxable events and occurrences within that city. So there's a list of cities that meet the 60,000 population threshold. So in those cities, if the county is going to impose the 1/10, it needs to demonstrate that it is investing at least 30% of the monies raised within those cities on the purposes of 1590. purposes of 1590. So, in Renton, we'd be talking about approximately $840,000 a year. So, in terms of sort of setting forth the policy choices and dialogue for tonight, I think it's pretty clear while the county has ruled this out, it is not going to meet the September 30th, 2020 deadline. We expect that tomorrow, the full county council will refer this item to both their committee of the whole and the regional policy committee on which Mr. Mayor sits. So, that'll be referred to those committees beginning for October 5th. We also know that the county is quite likely to go ahead and impose the one-tenth. But the fact that it's not going to do so by September 30th, 2020 opens up a potential avenue of opportunity either for Renton or any other individual city. And if our city so desires, it could impose this for affordable housing investments within Renton. And just as a sense of scale, the dialogue we wanted to have with you, that would involve $2.8 million a year that could be used for Renton projects if the city has a desire to proceed with the one-tenth of a cent versus the $840,000 a year. I mentioned to you this 30% threshold, that would be approved by King County. I think it's important to talk about that there are some differences in policy objectives on how a one-tenth of one cent sales tax would be used depending on whether it's the county or its individual cities in the south end of the county. As we shared earlier, King County has emphasized using this one-tenth of one cent to secure up to 2,000 permanent supportive housing units for those experiencing chronic homelessness and really focusing their investments in the 0 to 30% AMI segment. You know, in terms of Renton, the Housing Action Plan that we're developing, the work we're doing with groups like Skip, I would say the vision is at least utter and reverie in one's right and in one's not right. It's just a different policy objective. So, this lists some of the things that, from a CED perspective, would be uses of the one-tenth of one cent that might make some sense for a community like Renton. Workforce housing, up to 60% AMI, senior housing, housing for those with disabilities, veterans housing, housing for DV survivors, et cetera. And the reason we wanted to have this discussion with you is the fact that this is not going to be adopted by King County by September 30th, 2020, does allow the city the opportunity to establish this funding to support affordable housing projects in Renton that would be approved by this council if this council sees fit to do so. We noted here that we could use monies toward bonding some of this revenue and using some of the money for repayment of those bonds. Bonding would allow funding larger projects upfront, maybe doing some projects faster without waiting for annual proceeds to stockpile. And I think one of the policy items for you to sort through is the control over the use of the dollars. If we would like to just see the county go ahead with the one-tenth of one cent, there would be that 30% threshold. That would be the county's decision-making process. If the city council has a desire to move forward on the one-tenth, it would be the city's control over the use of the dollars. And here's sort of laying out the options and our attempt to give you some pluses and minuses frankly. If the King County Council imposes the one-tenth, that's the county's decision. The city would work with the county on utilizing some of the sales tax funding raised in Renton as best we could. For example, on things like relocating the Red Lion Shelter residents to, you know, a more suitably zoned area for permanent supportive housing, and doing our best to ensure that the $840,000 a year is invested back into things in Renton that make good sense from our perspective. The minuses here is Renton receives a guaranteed benefit of 30% versus the 100% we talked about. That's ultimately a King County decision on the 30% spending. And the $840,000 is more likely to be spent on those priority objectives from a county perspective. And then if the council wishes to look at the idea of imposing the one-tenth, obviously, under that scenario, 100% of the sales tax revenue generated within Renton is spent within Renton as you see fit. That's as we talked about before, the $2.8 million a year for eligible projects and services. Obviously, under that scenario, that's Renton making a decision on a new tax, not the county. And we well know the economy's in a downturn, and we have people out there struggling. I think one of the dynamics I would point to here is we have a pretty good idea that this one-tenth of one cent sales tax is going to be imposed. So, it's not a question of whether those buying goods in the city of Renton will be paying the one-tenth. It's really a question of where those proceeds go and how they're utilized by some local government entity that is doing the collection of the proceeds. So, here's a staff recommendation from CED that Chip can certainly go into in further Definitely would like to invite Mr. Mayor to make any comments he sees appropriate now. And obviously, we wanted to open this up to your questions, your thoughts, and any direction you want to give us. I think the last thing I would note is that if the council has a desire to move ahead on the one-tenth of one cent, we would suggest that you do so expeditiously because obviously it's going to be in your interest and frankly, in the county's interest to know what any individual cities are doing here. So, with that, I'd open it up to the bigger dialogue, invite the mayor and Chip to comment, and obviously invite your questions and perspectives.
Thank you, Doug. I appreciate your presentation. Mr. Mayor, do you want to add anything to this presentation?
No, I think Doug did a great job of laying out the possibilities there. The one thing I'll point out is I've had discussions with a number of the mayors here in the South County, and Auburn, Tukwila, Kent are for sure going to be taking, or at least attempting to take the 1% and keep that internal in the city. So, and I know other cities are also looking at it. So, Chip, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, Mr. Mayor. I would just simply say that Doug did a really nice job presenting this objectively. Not so objectively, I will simply say, this is an opportunity for the city to refund our Housing Opportunity Fund to create affordable housing from 0 to 60% that meets the city's priorities, not necessarily King County's, in a way that ensures that the residents that are paying that one-tenth of 1% in the city are seeing the benefits of those investments within the Renton City limit. So, as Doug says, this really provides us the opportunity to utilize the money for projects that are important priorities for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief.
And if I might add real quickly, Madam Council President, Mayor, thank you for bringing up the point about what we're hearing from other south-end cities. We've also, it's our understanding that Tukwila has a sincere interest in moving forward on this as an individual city, and we understand Issaquah is having discussions around this as well. We are not sure they're going to move ahead, but we know they're having council discussions of it.
Thank you, Doug. So, Councilmember O'Hara?
Yes, thank you. I'll save my comments for a little bit later, but I'm wondering if we can get rid of the screen share so that we can actually see each other, please?
Thank you. Okay. Councilmembers, do you have any questions? I will actually go around the room and ask for your opinion on this because we are going to need to hear from each one of you, your feelings about this. So, I'm going to start by seniority. Councilmember Corman?
Thank you, President Perez. Yeah, so thank you for the presentation. I, so I favor, I favor us going ahead and implementing the sales tax in Renton and having full control of the funds. The council's heard me talk before about how confident I am in our working, partnering with our housing authority. I feel we've been leaders really in the county in trying to spread out the housing, to enable people that are struggling for affordability to live throughout the community. We've stayed away from big, kind of congregate, the kinds of housing projects that were torn down in New York 30 years ago because they were disasters. And instead, we've been working to bring everybody into a dignified housing situation in our city. I think we do lead the county in terms of the number of subsidized units we've already created for it here in Renton. And I think given the amount of funding, we could continue to be leaders and show the rest of the county how it's done, doing the kinds of partnering that we've done. So, I favor that. I mean, I will go ahead and editorialize a little bit. I'm concerned when I look at the way that King County is intending to use the money to go purchase more hotels and motels. They're talking about all the great deals they can get. I think some of those great deals are going to be in Renton and Kent and Auburn, and they'll be considering that this is a great success as they, you know, move more homeless people from the more expensive areas down to the cities that are, that will struggle the most to actually pay for services. So, that part concerns me, but I think what we can do is sort of in a, as leaders, is show, you know, be good stewards, do like we've done before, provide good housing opportunities and permanent housing opportunities, not just the motel room with a microwave in it, but an actual real apartment where somebody can live a long dignified life. So, I'm in favor of it. You're muted now.
Sorry, yeah. I don't know how long we have to be in some meetings for me to learn that I have to mute myself. Thank you, Councilmember Corman. Councilmember McErvin?
Yeah, so, shouldn't be a surprise to everyone that, given my work on affordable housing, that I think this is a no-brainer. I think it absolutely makes sense. I was certainly one of the folks leading the charge, John wishing for the qualifying local tax that was previously authorized by 1406, then of course, the governor subsequently vetoed. So, I think this could be a really important funding source for us implementing our affordable housing plan. And as Randy said, we've been a leader in this in the past and continue to do so, but to be able to really step up our game, I think this will be really important. Rent residents will be paying it anyway. It makes sense for them to keep those dollars in the community. The one editorial I'll add to that is certainly, I like that we can view a broad strategy this way, but I certainly don't want to just look past that 0 to 30%. I would love to see as part of this needs assessment so we can make sure we do tailor that funding to fit exactly where the needs are greatest in the committee, in the community, so that if there are other tools we have in the tool chest for some of that higher range, that we can leverage this money to put it where it does the most good and we get the best bang for our buck. But I'm definitely for it.
Thank you, Councilmember McErvin. Councilmember O'Hara?
Yes, thank you. And I think personally, I will find it easier to explain a yes vote on this than I would find it to explain why we are giving 70 cents of every Renton dollar to King County, and we're also giving them the right to decide how to spend the remaining 30 cents in our community. I think I would struggle to explain our inability to act to keep that from happening. And I also want to just make the comment that it feels like King County is looking at this as simply real estate transactions. And this is so much more. This is building community. And I don't think you build community by buying hotel rooms or hotels. So, I agree that I think this is a real opportunity for us to build community and to do it in a way that we can tailor it to our, to our community needs and maintain control over all of those dollars. I'm absolutely 100% behind this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Hara. And I saw that Councilmember Prince has joined, so because I'm going through a run in seniority order, I'm going to have to give the floor to Councilmember Prince.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm assuming we're talking about House Bill 1590? So, I think a couple of things. I think, one, this is an opportunity, as Valerie said, as far as building community, that we may not get again. And I would rather we as a city make a determination of what we're going to do as opposed to letting someone else determine what they're going to do for us. And that's pretty much where I'm at.
Thank you, Councilmember Prince. Councilmember Van?
Yes, can you hear me? Hello? Can you hear me? Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Doug, for your presentation. Very informative, very much appreciated, given the comparison. Given, you know, my first initial thing is, no, I don't want to raise tax. But given that there's no other option because King County is going to do it, we better, this is the opportunity that we have to have control of our money because this is our residents paying taxes, and then of course, King County taking control. And I think that's very much something that we're not elected to do, is to give our money off to other jurisdictions. So, very much appreciate the presentation. And because we're in a situation where it is an opportunity, given that, you know, either way, there is going to be taxes raised, that why not for us to reinvest in our communities? And just echo what Councilmember McErvin mentioned, the needs assessment is very important. I appreciate the recommendation that the extra potential amount of taxes that we can get to build our, invest in our communities. We're certainly having a needs assessment to see what is the specific needs of Renton at this point. And just really, just like all my colleagues, I think it's an important opportunity for us to make, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Van. Councilmember Benedict?
Yes, thank you very much, Council President. I am 100% behind the staff recommendation that we go forward with this as a city. You know, I spent a lot of years on the Planning Commission, and I saw firsthand some of the very wonderful work that has been done, planning what could be incredible affordable housing in this community, particularly looking at what could be done in the, you know, in the Sunset area. And what I love in particular is that this gives us an opportunity to have a breadth of responses to the problem of affordable housing and not just, not just one. And it does give us the opportunity, as other council members have said, to decide what it is that is most important for our community, what's our priority, and really benefit the community and make it a healthier one for the long term. So, I'm 100% behind the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Councilmember Benedict. I just have a couple of comments and questions, Doug. Just to make sure that our community understands very clearly, this 1% tax, one cent sales tax, is a decision that is King County or the is a decision that is King County or the city are going to make it, but it's not like, there is not a choice that this decision is not going to happen. And the reason why I want to be very clear about this is because I agree with Councilmember Van. Obviously, most of our residents are concerned about the economy, the economy and the situation right now. They don't feel that is fair for anybody to increase taxes in any form or way. I just want to make sure and clarify that this is a collection of 1 cent of sale tax that if we don't take it, County will do it. Am I right on this?
Yes, Madam Council President. So the 1/10th of 1 cent, actually, is something that King County has said it wants to go ahead with. I think we've talked to individual county council members who have said it's extremely likely that the county will go ahead with it. So I think we felt like, as staff and through the mayor, that we should convey that to you, that this is very, very likely to happen. And then it becomes a question of if it's going to be paid, who is the arbiter of where the funds raised should be used.
Thank you. So I echo, obviously, all the comments that my colleagues have expressed, but I also want to add that there are two portions of this that I really like. One is the fact that we can use 50% of this revenue to pay our bonds, and that's very important for cities. And the other part is that this money can be used also for seniors as well as for domestic victims of domestic violence. I think having, you know, a revenue that we can collect, that we can diversify as much as possible to help all kinds of vulnerable communities and vulnerable populations, give us that freedom. And I really like the idea that the final decisions are going to be made by the city and not by King County. So I do appreciate your presentation, and also I agree with the staff recommendation at this time. So I'm going to open at this moment the floor for other council members to add more questions if they feel like, or if you guys do, suppose a final remarks. I can see Councilmember O'Halloran.
Yes, thank you. So for the sake of expediency, it sounds like we're all on the same page. What is the next step and when do we take it? Thank you.
I can start on that one, Councilmember O'Halloran. I think the next step would be for staff to prepare a draft ordinance and send an agenda bill. It is something that we did send over to the legal department to be prepared to do pending your discussion and direction that you gave us tonight.
Thank you, Doug. Councilmember McErvin. I think Councilmember McErvin is frozen.
Madam President.
Yeah, Councilmember Prince.
Doug, knowing that the county council, or the county, is transmitting something or transmitting something to the council to get this going, how soon do we need to make our attempt to know?
Doug?
Oh. Go ahead, go ahead, Chip.
You know, so as Doug just indicated, and he also indicated in the presentation, that time is critical here because, as Doug indicated, there's an inevitability to the fact that this is going to happen. And especially, as the mayor indicated, especially as more cities become apprised to the fact that this is an opportunity. So it's really incumbent on us, if our desire is to do what you've all collectively stated, to do it as quickly as possible. To that end, we in CED have put together a draft agenda. As Doug indicated, it's in the city attorney's office now. We expect to be able to put that in the form of agenda bill this week, so it could be considered by the council Monday, October 5th, if you desire.
Okay, okay. That is, that was what I was looking for. I was looking for a date because I, you know, wanted to make sure that we, you know, this is too important to get caught up.
Are we going to still have time for next Monday? That we're going to, we still be on time, if you are, next Monday?
Yes. County is not doing anything before the 30th.
Yeah, I was just wondering if we are not missing the deadline here.
Madam President, we think if you act on October 5th, you will be very timely. I think the county is going to move rather expeditiously, but they do have a referral that they'll start with at their committee level, their committee of the whole and their regional policy committee.
Madam President, I have one more process question.
Yeah, Councilmember Prince, could you please just wait until Councilmember McErvin asks his question, and then I come back to you? Or is a follow-up question you can ask?
It's a follow-up question.
Okay, yes, yes, go ahead.
Are we doing, would that be first and second reading next week?
Oh, that is, Councilmember Prince, that is a great question. I've already posed that to our city attorney, who's actually doing some legal research. Because in our estimation, the worst thing that could happen is for the council to do first reading on Monday, and then the county council the next night on Tuesday, October 6th, to take a different action. So Leslie Clark is actually looking into this issue to see if we legally can do first and second reading both next Monday, October 5th.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to ask first, Councilmember McErvin.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I think I got a little laggy there, so I apologize if you called to me previously. It wasn't really a question, it was more another comment, and I apologize if this already got said. I think Doug hinted at this, and not that I need to make the tough sell on anybody here, but the other benefit, obviously, of this is through skip and through other, if we have regional resources and we want to kick it back, we certainly can do that, having control. And to me, that's another benefit, that we at least get that decision. But if there is bigger solutions, we can certainly funnel to that way. That was just an observation.
Thank you, Councilmember McErvin. Councilmember Corman.
Yes, thanks, President Perez. So I'm very much support, some of the questions are, like, comments by my colleagues that sort of addressed what I was going to say, which is that I would like us to move quickly. And then I guess I'd also like to hear from Doug and Armando, if possible, whether we've formalized any kind of reaction to the county's proposal that they'll spend their money, you know, buying up hotels. I just want to make sure it's equitable, but it doesn't, I mean, every time a hotel is purchased, it really shifts the revenue picture for a city because a property that was, that was bringing in tourism and bringing in sales tax and lodging tax, property tax suddenly goes on the rolls. In fact, I don't even think that they pay property tax anymore, depending on who owns it. So I'm just wondering if we're addressing that, because I, again, back to my earlier comment, I have a feeling this might make the affluent communities around Seattle more affluent and less affluent, even less affluent. And I just want to, as part of our response to this, make sure we're being advocates for the citizens of our city and also all of South King County.
Thank you, Councilmember Corman. And before I pass the microphone to the mayor, I very much appreciate the fact that you're bringing this issue to the table. I know you're talking about his, the budget proposal of King County Executive Doug Constantine, and the idea of investment of buying motels and hotels, and the position of the city that if this is going to happen, it has to be equitable.
Exactly.
Among King County and all the cities that not just spend this money buying hotels in South King County, and as you say, the most rich communities not having anything. Councilmember Pabon, I mean, Mayor Pabon, the microphone is yours.
Thank you, Council President Perez. So, yes, Councilmember Corman, it is something that we've been looking at, talking about. One of the things I will say is, this is an issue that's come up quite frequently with the other mayors in SCA meetings, where, you know, the concern is that the land is cheaper in the south end and that the easiest solution is to buy up a bunch of properties in the south end. And it's not just Renton that's concerned with this, it's the other, the other cities. So, you know, before we formulate our response, we were looking for direction from council. And now that we have that direction, it definitely helps guide the narrative. Chip, is there anything you would like to add to that? I think that it's a little too soon to get out too far ahead of ourselves, but obviously the council has said, or not the council, the county has said that they are looking at placing facilities in cooperation with cities. The concern here is that cities are going to be uncooperative, and they're going to have all this money and need to place these facilities. Ideally, what we would like to do is have a robust program, kind of like Councilmember McErvin talked about, where we are identifying the needs of our community and finding solutions for those needs. And, you know, as far as the diluting of the population in Seattle, I mean, that's a kind of a more broad conversation that we need to be part of and make sure that we don't end up with five or six or seven properties. I think that unfortunately, there is some benefits that have been made and progress and ideas created around how you work with homelessness and how you offer those solutions. But I don't know that all of the details have been thought out. And so going from small level practice, they've got one facility, and taking that county-wide, there's some concerns. I mean, what is the, you know, what is the long-term ratifications of, you're talking somewhere between 20 and 30 properties throughout the county? That's a lot of hotels that you're taking out and basically changing that community in that area. So, you know, it's a challenging conversation right now that needs to be had, but this is a great step for us because it leads, it gives us some direction on where the county wants to go, or where the council wants to go.
And I just add, I think you all have really hit some of the key topics. You know, it's one of those things where the intentions are good. I think there clearly is a need for more permanent supportive housing units for those experiencing chronic homelessness. As the mayor said, now, the county has said it wants to have this be with willing partners and willing sellers. And so that's good intent, and it's a worthy objective. But I think, as the mayor's noted, the execution is going to be difficult because if you're talking about 2,000 units spread across King County, you probably will need 20 or more types of facilities. And, you know, when you get to the rubber hits the road and who wants to be the receiver of all the facilities, it's not going to be easy work. And I think the, it factored into this discussion tonight where, you know, I think it leaves Renton, if you wish to go forward, as you've signaled, with maybe a little more of the decision-making authority to make this money work for your community and your needs.
Yeah. You know, what I, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm going to clarify your name, is Mayor Paboni, and again, mispronounced it. And thank you, Doug. One of my biggest concerns, and I'm going to pass the microphone to my colleagues that are raising their hands in a minute, it's that every single time that I hear the executive talk about the benefits of purchasing hotels and transferring our vulnerable populations to these facilities as a shelter, are the positives. What I don't see and what I have not hear is how they are going to fix some of the challenges that the cities that host these facilities confront in the last six months. I hear the good things, and there are a lot of good things in opening the certification shelters, and we give them kudos for that. But what I want to hear is Mr. Flor contacting us and say, what are the challenges? So in the future, if we're going to purchase 20 or 30 more hotels, they address the challenges that the cities that we have been hosting these hotels, we have been facing during this time. And not just us, but as well as the residents of these facilities, because every single time that I hear, this is an example of a Texas story that moved to the Red Lion and then to a housing, I never heard the other 20 that didn't have medical attention on time and they have to call 911 because all the other issues happened. So we need to make sure that they understand that when you give a story, you have to give the full story, not just the nice part of the story. So that's my two cents. Councilmember Benedetti.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions for Doug, if that's all right. So the first question is, is I understand it, there's still a hurdle to the county using the money in this way, and that's that they have to request an amendment to the state statute. What do you think is going to be the timeline of them requesting and potentially being granted that statute? And then, I'm sorry, that amendment? And then, I'm trying to understand, even though I absolutely am with everyone here that we want to act quickly, is there some road for the county? Now, I mean, they're not going to meet the 30th deadline. What's the risk here for us? Because in terms of any delay, understanding, of course, that we want to act with any haste, but I'm just wondering, is there a potential for an end run here?
Councilmember Benedetti, I think on your first question, unless the legislature goes into a special session post-election, which has been now given a little bit more conversation, the next opportunity for the county to make the, pursue the technical fix in statute would be the 2021 regular session. So there's certainly a way for the county to, as I think they plan to do, to lay the foundation by deciding to impose this, and then, as the collection starts, asking the legislature to help with this technical fix around explicit authority for purchasing, not just constructing and rehabbing. On the second part of your question, on the end run question, I think if the council is deciding to act as you've signaled tonight, and if legal sees a pathway to doing this on the 5th, I think it stands you in pretty good stead to go ahead and do this and be the imposer of the 1/10th, if you will. We don't know exactly how quickly the county will act. We do know that on their agenda tomorrow at the county council is to make the referral of the 1/10th of 1 cent proposal, as I shared, to their committee of the whole and their regional policy committee. Could they theoretically do something else and expedite it? Theoretically, they could.
Councilmember Benedetti, do you have another question? Thank you. Councilmember O'Halloran.
Yes, thank you. And I just want to clarify, if we pass this, does King County still have the right to spend some of their money in their choosing in our community?
I'd ask others to jump in. My sense is the answer is yes. The county theoretically could look to invest dollars in cities around the county as well as the unincorporated area. Remember that in our particular county, about 89, 90% of it is incorporated. So I think the answer is yes. What the county has said is that they would want to do it with partners that are willing to do it.
And the second, I had another question on that, and I've forgotten it, so I'll raise my hand if I remember.
Any other comments or questions?
I remembered my question.
Okay, Councilmember O'Halloran.
Thank you. So is the county going to abide by cities zoning rules as they go forward with this proposal? Are they going to respect cities zoning as they look for willing partners?
I can answer that. They have said they are going to. So.
Thank you, Mayor Paboni. So with that, I don't see more questions, so I want to thank you, Doug, and Chip, and Mr. Mayor, and this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.